Hello everyone. And welcome to this session on public service productivity. This is the session, second of two sessions at the conference on public service productivity. Yesterday, we had Bernard Casey talking about adult social care and Martin Weir talking about preventative services and I talked a bit about some of our methods development in this space. But today is a slightly different shape and plan. We're going to showcase you some of the things that we're doing in and around the review alongside further academic work to give you a bit more of a vista of all the things which are happening in the world of the public service productivity review. So for those of you who don't know much about the review, in 2022, the Chancellor commissioned two pieces of work, one led by the Chief Secretary of the Treasury, looking at how to improve productivity across government and a piece led by the National Statistician to look at improving the measures so that we could understand better where the trends were taking us and what the data was showing. We, all this work is predicated on the review, which was led by Tony Atkinson in the mid 2000s. And the ONS has been working to deliver this ever since. We've been able to make some significant step forwards in some areas. But the review gives us the opportunity to actually widen the scope of our ambition and look across the full range of public services. And of course, public services make up 20% of GDP and fundamentally matter in how we think about standards of living and productivity more generally. I'm Richard Hayes, I'm Deputy Chief Economist, I'm one of the two members of the senior civil service at the ONS working on the review alongside Deborah Presswood. I'm afraid she got the ticket to go to the conference in Mexico and I came to Manchester. So you can probably tell he's more important in that relationship. But it's a delight today, we've got a number of speakers, I'm going to just quickly introduce everybody and then we're going to dive straight in. So we're going to start with Matt and Rebecca, who are going to be taking us through Nowcasting and our methods to attempt to improve the timeliness of the data we produce. Because of course, it's not just quality, it's also timeliness which helps to make data more useful. Then we're going to take a trip to Cambridge and Nina Jordan, who is from the Bennett Institute of Public Policy and she's going to take us through some of the research that she's been looking at in terms of digital transformation, the capability of using digital tools in public services. Importantly, it's not just statistics, you also need to be able to explain what's happening and what's driving changes. So we're then going to move to Ellis Moynhern and Sonia Carrera from the Office for National Statistics, who are going to talk us through some qualitative work we've been doing to understand how public sector workers think about productivity and particularly a new public sector time use survey, which we've been able to undertake to understand actually at a more granular level, how the public sector are using their time and how they're delivering the outputs they produce. Then Adam Clark's going to take us through the review's work on education and we're going to conclude with a roundup discussion where Martin and I, Martin Weir and I are going to discuss the papers and the work that's been undertaken thus far and try and bring it all to a bit of a close. Now you can tell that's quite a packed agenda, so people are going to be speaking for about 15 minutes each and I'm going to pass directly across to Matt and Rebecca. So over to you guys.
Thanks. So yeah, I'll just introduce myself, I'm Rebecca McAlpine, I'm a Senior Statistical Officer at the PSP Review Team. Matt is a subseries Methodologist at the ONS and we've been working together as the two teams to develop these timely Nowcast for annual PSP measures. As part of the PSP review, we've been sort of developing new measures for some of the indicators that we're using on inputs, outputs, quality adjustments. And also we have this milestone of producing new methods for Nowcasting public sector productivity indicators. Part of that was the first milestone on the PSP review was this first, first iteration of these Nowcasts, which culminated in a publication last November. So yeah, I'm going to be talking through the sort of development of that during the talk. So first of all, I'm just going to give a bit more background on the PSP indicators that we've been looking at, some of the data, some of the overview of the actual Nowcasting project. And then Matt's going to give some of the nitty gritty of the technical methodology. Then I'll come back to the next steps and then we'll have some questions. So Nowcasting is usually defined as predicting either the present, the the near future or the recent past. In this case, we were looking at predicting the recent past, which is also called backcasting. And we're looking, we were looking to, in the first instance, develop a Nowcast that could Nowcast for the most recent data that we had available. So that was for 2020 and 2021, 2022, public service indicators. And public service productivity has nine service areas for the annual annual indicators and has a composite total public service productivity indicator. We produce, produce annual publications for that. And one of the main reasons for developing these Nowcasts is the lag, which I'll go on to in a few minutes. And we have information for annual PSP indicators from 1997 to the up to the latest data we have available. So the way the, the project worked was that we worked from last, last autumn, we worked with a methodology team to develop this model to provide Nowcast for 2021 and 2022 indicators. We also got external review from and internal review from methods team within, within the ONS and also the Institute for Government, which fed into our evaluation of the models. And then obviously, in March this year, we had the actual 2021 annual statistics in the publication. So we could have another cross validation of the information. And now we're on to the second stage, the second iteration of bringing those all together to provide a the final sort of, the next iteration of the models. Just to say that it is, as always with a Nowcast, it's, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty around it. And we had another sort of major challenge was that the COVID happened in between. So we had, the first of those years was the first year after COVID. So the 2020 information that we had on public services, for a lot of the public services didn't behave like it usually would in the past series. And the Nowcast would usually take, take the, a real time indicator as a proxy for the the actual indicator that was being Nowcast. And so there was a lot of challenges around this because it was a shock that kind of was quite different to any other sort of shocks that have happened in the past. So part of this, the development of the Nowcast is looking at how COVID has impacted on these models. So one of the main reasons for this is the timeliness of the data. So in the annual public service data, we get, we have just recently published the 2021 data, which is on a just over a two-year lag. This compares to the quarterly data, which is on a three to four month lag. So we've just published the last quarter of 2023. So that means that the 2023 annual data wouldn't be published until 2026. So with this two-year lag, there's quite a lot of, has gone on in that meantime. So that is the main driver for, for the Nowcast. So in terms of what's happened previously and what previous attempts, we had to get these early indicators of annual public service productivity. In the last quarter publication for each of the quarterly, for the last few quarter four publications, there's been a combination of the annual statistics. So in this one, there's the, the annual, the real annual estimates for inputs, outputs and productivity. And they have been combined in this section to include, also add on the annualized quarterly, which is a combined aggregate quarterly indicators. So this is, is seen as, is being used as a sort of proxy. So the annualized quarterly for those two years is seen as a proxy for annual data. But it's just for total service productivity and obviously it doesn't include any of these back series relationships between the two, the two series. And I'd just like to say as well that at ESCO, there was an ESCO discussion paper that also developed some of these measures. Also did a Nowcast project review that actually looked at a sort of more complex Nowcasting approach that they developed a generic Nowcasting framework that took a lot of indicators that were economic indicators and social indicators and demographic indicators and attempted last year to Nowcast some of the public service output only. It was very complex and it was one, a process that would involve a lot of resources in terms of keeping the the back indicators to the large array of indicators that were needed, updated every year. And in addition, we also have these quarterly measures. So this was an alternative to that Nowcast, that quite complex Nowcast, where we were searching for sort of passing money and also replication within the, in our team. So every year, the idea would be that we could update it every year within, in quite a straightforward, logical way. So this is just the bit of information about the data. So the annual data, as you see, there's nine service areas and there's also a composite service area for the annual data. The annual data is a badge national statistic and it's based using the COFOG areas, which is and it's also quality adjusted for a lot of the service areas. This is in contrast to the quarterly that has a slightly different structure, which is just a seven service areas, it's not quality adjusted and it has a smaller number of services covered in there. So so as you can see, there's some quite clear links between some of the service areas, but some of the others, there's not so clear a link. So one of the challenges was to develop which, to understand which, which quarterly indicators would be a good proxy for the annual data. So in the end, we came up with, we decided to concentrate on a few areas. We, we looked at, in the end, we didn't, we dropped defence and we dropped any areas that were outputs equals inputs areas where we didn't have any output information. We also dropped annual social care and child social care because we had a limited time series. We only had information from 2010 and 2011 onwards respectively. Because of discontinuities in the data, the methodology had changed, which meant if we wanted to cross validate in any future sort of models, we had a much smaller time series to work with, so it would make it less robust. So we ended up with just healthcare, education and public order and safety as our main areas, but that, that accounted for about 60% of expenditure in the service areas. So I'm just now going to pass you on to Matt.
Yeah, thank you Rebecca. And I should, I should say that I didn't do a lot of this work. This is actually, a lot of this is actually due to, thanks to Mark Hogan, who couldn't be here because of family healthcare issues. So I'm a bit of a stand-in presenter, so don't shoot the messenger, that's what I'll say. So yeah, initially in how we were doing this was just, first question is, is, you know, using this quarterly data to try and Nowcast the annual data. Conceptually, they're measuring slightly different things because, particularly because the quarterly data is not accounting for changes in quality of output, it's only changing, accounting for changing quantity of output. So we want to assume that, we want to assume that there's some ongoing relationship there and that that is somehow stable over time. First question is, why can't we just use standard regression or ordinary least squares regression to look at this? And the reason that you can't do that is really because actually there's, you know, this ongoing relationship between them that we need to account for changes over time and that. And so we really wanted to use time series methods to look at this. If we were just to use all really squares regression and yeah, sort of the t-test would, to check for model validity would be incorrect and p-values in there would be too small and so be liable to skewers repression. And just using a key information criteria correction would, yeah, would not be a good guide for sort of model choice in which we were using in there. So we really wanted to look to account for errors in there that could be accounted for by a ream of time series. And within that, you've got, you know, accounting for error terms on the end. And hopefully using time series methods would, would account for those changes over time and mean that, you know, residual errors at the end would be small and normally distributed across the series. So to do this, we wanted to look at the list of predicted variables that we could use. And within that, we're using forward regression in there. And to assess this afterwards, we're also going to put the quality, the quality of the forecast and compare the Nowcasting a better to forecast measures. So we're using cross validation, so looking at exponential smoothing forecasting methods as well. And so this one here is just the first version of the output from this. So this was looking at data up to 2020 and then using that model to Nowcast values for 21 and 22. And certainly, yeah, for education productivity, we certainly have, yeah, some forecasts. So the Nowcast that's coming in there and in the dotted line, you'll also see that, yeah, there's the sort of the dotted line going all the way across, so that's sort of showing the long-term annual growth, compound annual growth rate in there. The actual accuracy of this, well, initial data showing that drop and then with Nowcast measures that we get in there comparing to the compound annual growth rate, I mean, you can see the compound annual growth rate would be a fairly basic measure of this, just extrapolating that in the future. But then with Nowcast measures, we get, we got a value out within the confidence interval. Now, the obvious risk of playing this fool's game of thinking that you know the future is that soon enough, the future comes up to catch up with you. And so, yeah, when we actually got real data in for 2021, then the issue was that particularly in this one, healthcare productivity, it came up quite substantially below the Nowcast measure. You could ignore that, all the difference in the line on the left, I think there are a few re-categorizations in there, which mean that it wasn't quite comparable in the same way. And so the outturn, yeah, came up quite substantially, well, below what we were Nowcasting it as. But there's, yeah, other, yeah, other things that could have affected that in there and there's potential to develop the model further. So just looking at this across different measures of public sector productivity. So for this one at total level, I mean, we were, we were, yeah, substantially below what we were Nowcasting and outside the confidence interval in there. Within healthcare, again, we were outside the confidence interval that we were getting in there and quite a way outside it. But then for other areas of public sector productivity, which maybe hadn't been quite so significantly affected by COVID, we were finding that the, yeah, we were sort of within the bounds of the confidence interval. So that was happening for education and again for public order and safety. So within this, we presented confidence interval as 95% confidence interval. And for all the different measures of, of different measures of public sector productivity in all different sectors, there were 18 of them, I think in total. So yeah, you would expect that 95% of confidence for one or two would fall outside of that. But that also makes the assumption that the relationships are sort of holding consistent over time. And obviously with COVID being in there, some of the, particularly in healthcare, relationships had changed quite a bit over time. Now, there was potential to develop the model a little bit further. And so we set, as Rebecca mentioned, we set it out for internal and external peer review. And there was quite a few recommendations that came from that. So yeah, allowing for lag variables potentially going into there. Looking at the cross correlation function peaks of the stationary series could change over there. And looking at for, yeah, models with the lowest AICC and that would avoid multi-kilunarity and checking that all variables going into there would be significant. Potentially, yeah, we, in the future, we want to look at outlier treatment and uncertainty due to COVID measures in there. And that productivity is calculated, yeah, and Nowcast input and output. And potentially that we can compare this to compound annual growth rate and dynamic and exponential smoothing measures of forecasting, so that would be using Holt Winters forecasting in there. And yeah, just skip over this a little bit, but you've got in there the error term of this. So the third row down of each of those, so look at the 2023 model and the 2024 model of this. You see that the error term has, of this has got a little bit smaller over time. But when the, yeah, RMSE of the long term has actually grown a little bit as we've accounted for more post-COVID data in there. But yeah, what we've got now is actually having a smaller return that we were seeing in the previous version of the model. And so this graph here is just sort of showing the long-term 97 to 2019 and comparing different iterative Nowcast, or forecasting Nowcast measures. So this is just 97 to 2006 and then Nowcast 2008 and then 97 to 2007, Nowcast 2009. And this is just showing the different measures over time. So compound annual growth rate, you can see, continually falls a little bit above the output line. Exponential smoothing, so yeah, whole winters forecasting, that is again, maybe a little bit closer to the actual outturn. But then the dynamic regression model that we are showing, we are using is, yeah, coming up, look quite closest to the line. Just zoom in on the latter periods of that. And you can see that, yeah, once again, the dynamic regression model that we're using comes up quite closest to the line. Next step, so, so yeah, the quarter four data was released, yeah, just a couple of weeks ago. And this is going to allow us to further develop, we're going to use this to further develop the Nowcasting estimates for 2022 and 2023. And with work underway to consider how best to incorporate the COVID into the new model. But there's, yeah, still plenty of reporting and liaison to going on with internal and external review panels. And is this us?
Okay. Fabulous, thank you so much. So any questions? Well, yeah, let's applause first. Sorry guys. Any questions? Oh, one in the middle, please. It's just coming.
Josh Martin, Bank of England and formerly of the ONS. A sort of a slightly big picture question. So as you nicely showed us, Matt, the, the outturn data fell outside of the the Nowcast range for, for the total and as you nicely showed us here. And as, as I interpret this, I think this is because in the past, we've had positive quality change. So the quarterly estimate, which doesn't include quality, tended to underpredict the total annual number, which did include quality. And the dynamic factor regression, if I understand it, sort of assumes that's going to continue to happen. But it didn't in this case. The quarterly statistic is, I think, pretty good, having worked on it a little myself, at predicting the, the outputs and the inputs without the quality. So it seems that the missing piece is the quality. And this dynamic factor model doesn't seem to tell us anything new about quality, other than to assume that it's going to carry on growing up at the same pace as before. So I wonder if, sort of big picture, focusing on this sort of method is sort of missing the point a little bit. The point should be, at least in my view, to focus on the quality bit, which is the bit that's missing, rather than exploiting some historical relationships about which we sort of, we assume that they're going to continue happening and we don't know anything new. So that's a sort of more, a strategic question possibly, but any thoughts?
Yeah, so you're correct in that, Josh. So yeah, this is kind of assuming that the quality measure, the relationship between quantity measure and the quality measure is going to continue changing over time at a fairly similar rate. Obviously with things in healthcare in particular, that relationship completely changed over COVID. Yeah, it would be really nice to further investigate that, but we don't have that many much data post-COVID to really say what that new relationship is. So what I'd love to say, we could just, should we just wait until that? But I think for now, yeah, the case of putting something out there, we've got some data out there and I think we could continue to put something out there with that. We can, yeah, further investigate outlying things sort of during 2020, but maybe potentially in the future.
And just to add to that, I think there's, there is still the potential to plunder this data and extract some value from it. Because my reading of these data is effectively that where education and public order and safety were able to fairly quickly revert back to pre-COVID patterns, i.e. to pre-COVID working patterns and models of practice. What we can clearly see here is that that story didn't hold in health. And actually, the ongoing dynamic impact of COVID is far more concentrated in health. And maybe I think you'd realise from looking at the generalised trends within the productivity series, where we have seen some continued lags in the data around education. But actually, what this is suggesting is that whilst there is some lags, that that pattern of reversion to those working patterns was fundamentally occurring, whereas COVID has fundamentally reshaped some of the relationships within health. And I think that, that's something important that we can draw out that is amazing, so a bit self-evident, particularly to those who analyse health. But I think being able to contextualise that across these different services is, is important information. But the point that yes, the missing component here is quality and we know that healthcare quality did fall in this period, which is the first time effectively we've seen healthcare quality fall in the back series going back to 2000. So it is clearly an important part of the story. Any more questions? Well, as I'm going to be fairly strict in keeping people to time anyway, I'm going to take this as an opportunity to get ahead of the clock and invite Nina to come on down and take the floor. So Nina, over to you. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Hello everyone, Nina Jordan, University of Cambridge. I will talk a bit about public sector productivity, of course, but more specifically report on the insights of a case study that I have conducted together with colleagues from Loughborough University during COVID. Just give you a pre-warning, there will be nothing about measurement, no statistics, no graphs, no equation. I hope that's hopefully still interesting to you. By the way, that's what ChatGPT-4 thinks public sector productivity looks like. And we can already see maybe that the digital aspect does, does play a role. I just found that interesting. And I mean, I know we are talking, or I'm talking to a very expert audience, so I don't need to talk too much about public sector productivity in general, but I thought it's still good to set the scene a bit, as Richard said in the beginning. Public sector productivity is very much at the centre of the political debate currently with, with the review going on, but also with local authorities having to submit public or like productivity plans in order to show how they, how they are thinking of increasing their, their productivity. I personally think that a lot of the debate very much focused, or is focused on cost efficiency, which is not surprising. However, we at the Bennett Institute, but also the Productivity Institute is advocating very much to take a more comprehensive understanding of productivity, also including factors like social value into the productivity equation. And it's also no surprise that digital transformation, digital tools, digital products are very much highlighted as a potential way of enhancing public sector productivity for citizens, so to provide public sector products and services in a digital way, but also to increase the internal effectiveness and efficiency of processes within public sector organisations. However, it's also probably no news to you that we have many like failed digital transformation projects in the public sector. Probably the Post Office scandal being the most, most recent one. I've just put together just a few headlines of where things went wrong when the public sector tried to I've just put together just a few headlines of where things went wrong when the public sector tried to introduce digital services, digital products, et cetera. And I think it is worth looking at specific case studies in more depth because I feel very often the debate is on a very abstract level about like the benefits and the challenges of digital transformation. So I thought for this conference, I bring like a very concrete example of a case study we have conducted during the COVID pandemic. So this is about a digital platform that's called Resilience Direct. Has anyone heard of Resilience Direct before? No, I'm not surprised. However, Resilience Direct is quite an essential tool within emergency collaboration in the UK. So Resilience Direct was introduced by the Cabinet Office 2014 and has around 80,000 users. And the users are mainly coming from emergency response agencies such as police, fire and rescue service, ambulance, NHS, but also local authorities. And not on this list because they are not really an emergency response agency, but also a lot of government departments have access to Resilience Direct. So the idea is Resilience Direct is this digital platform where all these different emergency responders can upload information, can upload data so that the emergency response is being improved and hopefully better than without this platform. And the introduction of Resilience Direct is very much based on this idea that through information technology, we can provide better access through data, the data has higher quality. We are not relying on individuals, but rather we are making decisions as a collective. And by different agencies, agencies being able to access the platform at the same time, decisions are quicker, which of course can be crucial in the case of an emergency. So for example, Resilience Direct played a crucial role while the Manchester bombing at the arena took place. So it played an essential role in like quite big crucial emergencies. This is how Resilience Direct looks like, not too, I don't know if fancy is the right word. It's not, it's not a, it's not a very sophisticated application, I would say. So it's a webpage, you log on onto this webpage with your login details. And then basically, Resilience Direct has like different areas that you can access. If you look at the top left corner, these are the four different areas within Resilience Direct. Collaborate is the biggest one that most people make use of. And this then looks like the two screenshots on the right. So you basically have different folders either for different emergencies. So for example, COVID, of course, or storms, Brexit is also considered an emergency. And then, then you have, for example, different, you know, different folders from different departments where they can upload their information. And you also have a mapping function where, for example, you can highlight where flooding is happening or roads are blocked, et cetera. So this is how it looks like. So what we did, this was, this was a research funded by ESR C was called a rapid response during COVID. So the idea was to do research that actually helps the COVID response being more effective. I've done this research while I was still at Loughborough University with my colleague Stenpage and Chris Lebrowski. I have been involved in just observing what is happening on the platform. So we got access to the platform. So I was observing which kind of data was uploaded, how are people sharing information, what was not uploaded? And then on top of that, I've interviewed 66 users of Resilience Direct, including the management team and some people in the cabinet office. And as I said, it was a very, like, we created this research project within a couple of weeks because it was a rapid response. So it was basically about how to understand how people were using the platform. And then, of course, recommend improvements to the cabinet office directly. So what we found, of course, multiple things, I keep it like quite high level at this point. We have grouped our, our insights into three categories around technology, around learning and around collaboration. So from a tech, technology perspective, maybe unsurprisingly, of course, user friendliness, seamlessness being able to seamlessly integrate the platform into the normal routines was very important. And being able to customize the interface, which was not possible on this platform, was like highly important for the people to use it. Just to give you a very simple example, it was not possible to drag and drop documents from one folder into another. You had to download documents and then upload them in the next folder. Seems very basic. And you think, is that so important? Yeah. When you're like in an emergency and I don't know, an attack is happening, a flooding is happening, it is important for the end user to to be able to just drag and drop documents. It was raised like so many times within the interviews. In emergency collaboration, learning plays a huge role because you want to learn what went well in an emergency, what could have be done better in future emergencies. And we very much learned that trust was essential for any kind of learning happening. And this is also emphasized on my next slide because from our perspective, trust was the main issue here, how the platform was used. And this is why I was pointed out earlier that local authorities and central government both had access to the platform. And during COVID, of course, the idea was, as it was within, with emergencies before, that both sides upload information to this platform, right? However, what we saw what was happening was that local authorities continued to upload information and nothing was coming from central government, right? Local authorities were asking for where are our emergency plans, where are worst case scenarios? And central government, even though they have like a responsibility to also share information through this platform, didn't upload any information. So learning was massively hindered here and trust played a, trust played a huge role because when we had conversations with central government, the main issue that was raised that they were worried about leaks to the media, right? So this trust issue here, in theory, you have this great platform where all sides can like contribute. However, only one side is contributing because there's a lack of trust between partners. And this is why we have like a second chapter basically in our findings on relationships that we could see that there was a huge conflict between different interests of like these different agencies being on the platform. And the collective objective of responding to COVID in a coherent way was kind of missed because agencies were more fighting against each other than collaborating. So as it's often the case, the technology was kind of okay, right? It's, it worked okay. There could have been things that could have been better on the platform. But the problem was how people used it and how people actually not used it in the intended way. And we realized that trust was the main issue, why people did not use a collaborative platform as intended. So these were like the key lessons we took away. And I think this can be like quite generalized that any kind of platform that's used or should be used for digital information sharing in the public sector, but also in the private sector, of course, should be designed from a user-centric perspective. So actually talking to a police officer, like what is important for you in a case of emergency? Customization played a huge role. I don't know if this is an emergency response specific requirement, but it definitely played a huge role. And this is more like on the tech side and on the people's side. Trust and the idea of like we, we are all working towards collective goals was heavily hindering or like the, the lack of this, right? Was heavily hindering the effectiveness of the platform. Because trust plays such an important issue. I'm not, I just want to flag this to you because I've basically just copied and pasted this, this is not mine, from a blog post that was recently published on the productivity website by Kevin Martin. He wrote a whole blog post around trust and how this is linked to productivity and performance. And this is also recommending just a few like very practical things on how to increase trust within an organization. So I just wanted to flag that to you and anyone who is interested in this topic. I would recommend having a look at this, at this blog post. If you want to know more about this, on the right, this is the report that we have published at the time. And then me and my colleagues Lucy and Tola, we also recently published a paper on the, with the Productivity Institute about public sector more, more generally. So these are two resources you might want to use. That's it, I think.
Any questions? One over here from Paul and then Thomas in the middle.
Thanks, Nina. Very interesting. I think you said that this tool was also used for coordination in the Manchester Arena bombing. The one thing I, or one of the things I remember about the public inquiry into that was that it was precisely the coordination between the emergency responders that was highly criticized. Was there any evaluation of the way in which this tool performed? As part of, part of that, was it anything to do with the tool or was it just other kind of stuff that went wrong?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a very good point. So it was evaluated. I was not like part of this because our focus was very much on COVID. But I know that within the interviews, people frequently referred also to this emergency. I think one of the biggest learnings that took out of what happened then was that the tool should be enabled more life updates. So now, when, when COVID happened, it was still very static. There was, for example, no application you could put on your phone. And this is something that came out of the arena bombing that actually having access to like life updates on your device that you have with you as, for example, ambulance or police at the scene was one of the things they demanded for, basically. Yeah.
And a question in the middle.
Thank you, Nina. So these capabilities like drag and drop, they are very standard in commercial tools. And the obvious question is, wasn't that developed by a commercial provider? Did the, did sort of the public sector develop this itself?
It was a private provider who developed this tool. And I think it is a good example. Obviously, we were not involved when they commissioned the, the design of the platform. However, what I got from the, from the conversation was that this is a good example how bureaucracy and going for the cheapest provider available might be, or yeah, might be not the most effective solution in the long term. And the platform was also only able to get a, how do you say, like a refresh, I think every couple of years. So actually, there was no budget planned in to like, do like some ad hoc adjustments. It was, I mean, definitely not one of the best solutions you could get on the market, definitely not. But given how budgets processes work in the public sector, I think it was one of the cheapest options to go for.
Any other question? One in the middle down here.
Hi Nina. So you said that one of the barriers to the success of this product was the lack of trust between organizations, within organizations. Could you elaborate on kind of what that meant in practice, that they didn't trust each other? Did they just not talk? Did they think that they had nefarious intentions?
Okay, I can give you one example. So as I said, trust, the trust issue we observed was between organizations on a horizontal level, but also very much between central and local governments. So in theory, in emergency response, the idea is that the decision is taken on the lowest level because then you have the quickest response to an emergency. But what we saw during COVID is that like all the power was centralized, like up into central government and actually not spread to like local authorities. And one of the, one of an example is what I just mentioned briefly earlier. Central governments were preparing worst case scenarios of like what could happen for different areas, but actually did not share these worst case scenarios with the local authorities whose responsibility it was to prepare for a potential worst case scenario, right? And so a lot of local authorities were demanding for it in a very harsh way. And I personally could understand where they were coming from. So from central government, one of the typical responses was we are afraid of media leaks, leaks to the media. And one of their solution was that they would share it, but only with one person in the local authority. And this one person was not allowed to like share it more broadly. Which of course, if the idea in an emergency response is that police, ambulance, NHS, hospitals, vaccination centers are like aligned, it's very difficult, right? And so, yeah, this was a common theme that massively hindered the way, especially the local level could respond to. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to keep going through our rapid fire tour of all things public service productivity. And we're going to now turn to Ellis and Sonia and the public sector time use survey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you can hear me all right. I'm Sonia Carrera. My colleague Ellis. We will talk about the residual we've done developing a survey and qualitative research on time use in the public sector. So a little bit of background about what we did and why we did it. First of all, I should probably try to make this nice move, which would be a good start. Let's see if the pointer works better. Yes. So the background for this research is that alongside understanding and improving the measurement of public sector productivity for the review, we also wanted, and there was much of a demand from Treasury and the Chancellor before Autumn Statement and then Spring Budget to understand how time is spent in the public sector. And in particular, with an interest in the amount of time that is spent on administrative tasks. So for example, filling out form or recording information with an idea that that could be time that is potentially having a negative impact on productivity because public sector, public service resources are not used in a way that is actually producing benefits. So we developed this work to understand, first of all, how much time is spent on different activities, including administrative tasks. Because there isn't, or at least there wasn't before, a unified measure across the civil service and different organizations and departments. But we also wanted to understand what this time spent on administrative task actually means for the people who work in the public sector. So is it actually wasted time or is it time that is important for um work in the public sector. So is it actually wasted time or is it time that is uh important for um the wider roles that they perform to be um performed in a good way? So we developed a qualitative element of this research to talk to um public sector workers, especially uh frontline uh workers, to ask them about uh what they think of their time that they spend on administrative tasks, uh what the impact is on productivity and uh what could be done to improve this. So in terms of the uh design of this research, because uh we didn't have a survey of this type before we adapted the time new survey that the ONS already um run with individuals, uh focusing much more on uh the time uh that public sector workers spend at work. So we targeted specifically uh civil servants and workers of uh frontline services. Uh and we developed a new uh set of questions to understand uh what they do at work. So to develop uh the survey itself, um we ran some focus groups and interviews um with uh frontline workers uh to try and uh understand exactly what they spend their time off, so that we could then develop a um a work frame of activities that could be used for the uh direct tool that the survey is based on. Um and uh we also tested uh the direct tool and uh the uh follow up questions part of the survey before running it uh to make sure that uh we were asking or presenting activities uh which actually made sense for the people who work in the public sector. So uh this work took place towards the end of last year and very beginning of this um of this year. And the survey was then in field um in February. Uh we used a uh sample from the uh Opinion and Lifestyle Survey uh that the ONS ran um selecting those individuals who uh responded that they uh work in the public sector. Um we achieved about 2000 um completed um, sorry, 3000 completed diaries from about 2000 individuals, uh because um some of the respondents could um fill out the diary for two days, especially when they um work on shifts, so they work across two days. Um and uh the um online diary and the survey were online. Uh and we also collected a number of uh asked a number of follow up questions, collecting information about uh people perception of their productivity uh and some questions on whether some tasks could be um automated um or delegated to um other colleagues. Shortly after the survey, I should actually say pretty much at the same time, because we had a very compressed timeline to deliver these findings in advance of the uh spring uh budget, we ran the qualitative stage, which uh included uh 20 interviews and three focus groups uh across uh four main sectors. Uh but I will tell you more about that qualitative stage in a few uh minutes. And now Ellis can tell you more about the survey itself.
Thank you. So as Sonia mentioned, I'm going to providing overview of the development of the first ever public sector time use survey um that we use to capture information on the time spent on differing activities within the working day, but with a particular focus on collecting information about time spent on admin tasks. So time use um studies are not new to the ONS. The ONS has been carrying out an online time use survey since around 2020. But that one's aimed primarily towards improving the measurement of unpaid household production and caring activities uh that aren't captured within traditional economic measures. And also to better understand time used from a well being or quality of life perspective. The visualization on the screen offers an example of our results and hopefully it's clear enough that you can see that there's a big red chunk in the middle of the day um that captures paid working time. But this traditional uh time use survey goes as far as that and doesn't break up those activities that are undertaken within the working day. So the first aspect to this project was designing an activity framework or an activity uh list that included the tasks, the activities that individuals undertake within their working day. And Sonia will talk about how the focus groups and research that she undertook helped us to do the um develop that activity framework. But the outcome of it was the screenshots of the leaflets that we've got on the slide that shows our public sector um time use activity framework. Uh this was provided to respondents of the survey within the communications that they receive when taking parting it um so that they can record their time against the activities listed there. And to the best of our knowledge, this is the first time that a time use survey is being undertaken um to capture information on activities within the working day across a whole sector. So it was really exciting for us to, to be the first to be building this framework. So our pilot survey sampled around 5000 individuals, as Sonia said, who'd either already responded to an ONS survey or who volunteered to participate through an invitation um within their workplace. Participants were issued with a demographic questionnaire and eight diaries or eight days, and they were asked to select any two of them on which they were working um to, to record their diary and record their time against. Um they recorded the time that they spent on their main activity, but also anything they were doing alongside it at the same time um for the full 24 hour period using the tool showing on the screen where they uh selecting activity from a dropdown list. Um select the start time, type in the duration, and then the timeline above populates over the course of the day to show how they're spending their time. But there were certain activities um that we wanted to find out more about. So we had some pop up questions that were triggered by them entering specific activities where we asked them around their perceptions of the importance of the task, whether they felt that the time that they spent on the task was about right, whether there were opportunities to delegate that task or to automate parts of it. So as Sonia said, in total, 3000 diaries of sufficient quality were collected and processed. And our priority uh was to publish some, some really high level estimates less than a month after the survey closed because there were some very live conversations going on at the time um on a public sector uh working time. But over the next few months, our focus has been a shift towards making sure we can get the micro data available to the researchers that want to use it, that have got suggestions and ideas for deeper analysis. And for us within ONS as well, to produce some of that deeper analysis, maybe looking at different sectors, um looking to at the different roles of individuals that participated. But for now, we're going to focus on the very high level estimates. And the chart shows the time on average that respondents spent on different main and secondary activities within their working day. So looking towards the top of the chart, we can see that student management, so you might have teachers in this category, patient management, policing activity, people spent more than six hours of their working day on those activities as um as their main task that they were doing at the time. And we've got a lot of um underlying data that we've published alongside these charts that shows breakdowns of what those activities are. So what actually is um patient management. And patient management in particular is a really interesting one because we see both high levels of primary activity being undertaken there and high levels of time spent on the secondary activity being undertaken. And this has caused us to look more at our activity framework and the connectivity of the tasks and the activities that we identified. So we had um treating patients, observing patients, writing prescriptions, all as separate activities. And I think as a result, we're seeing that uh healthcare professionals are undertaking more than one activity at, at any time. And that's why we're seeing the high levels of secondary activities. I also wanted to note that these are averages across the whole of the public sector. And the reason why that's uh so important is that the Q hours and 42 minutes, I think it is, uh recorded being spent on records management includes both people whose full time job is a records manager and also people who are um undertaking some records management alongside their primary role. So the obvious next step for us will be unpacking that, picking out the sectors, picking out the roles and really undertaking who's, who is actually doing these different activities. Now for my final slide, I just wanted to mention the more traditional survey questions that are companies, the more innovative time use survey. So we asked individuals um how they perceived their product or what they perceive their productivity level to be on the day that they completed the diary. And we saw that over half of individuals found themselves to be 90% productive. Uh when we look at um an 80% uh productivity level, 85% of people uh put themselves there. And Sonia's research that she'll cover next helped us unpick this and trying to understand the drivers of those productivity perceptions.
Thank you. Um in terms of the research that you've done, um as I mentioned, we uh do qualitative research for uh the survey, but um also to uh unpack what the survey uh responses showed. So while the title is still not updated and uh mentions the development, I'll talk with now a little bit more on uh the outcomes uh of the second stage of the qualitative research. Um so we ran this qualitative research uh with a uh sub sample of the um survey. Um and uh we achieved uh about uh 38 um contacts with uh people to part across three focus groups and uh 20 interviews. Um we focused the topics of these interviews, especially on the experiences of admin tasks. So for example, uh how important and uh why uh these use of our importance, use of all the time spent on different tasks. Um and also tried to unpack a little bit the differences between different sectors. So in terms of the sectors that we covered, uh we had education, health, uh social security and publicity. Um we asked about some of the barriers and difficulties. So for example, what makes some admin tasks more or less time consuming or more or less difficult to perform? And with the focus groups, we covered these tasks, but we uh these questions, but we focus much more on um generating ideas for improvement. So we used uh some Dignex, for example, to present uh the participants with uh hypothetical scenarios um with the often use of AI, for example, or even automation and get their views on uh whether um these uses were ethical or whether they saw some particular difficulties in um in dealing with Dignex actually happening in, in real life. Um in terms of the findings, uh so for experiences and ideas for improvement, um most of those took part, actually saw the administrative tasks, the ready for work as being important and in many cases even essential. So it didn't feel as if having to do this admin task was seen as something that was not the right thing to be done. However, where the issue with, in many, many cases, were, was about the amount of time that completing this task took, which often, especially in education, uh takes outside of uh working time because uh the just the participant just didn't have enough time um during uh the day. Uh and this amount of time was in many cases exacerbated by duplication and by systems, especially IT systems who don't talk to each other. So for example, in um in the health sector, many, many participants uh talked about having to um complete one uh form online and then having to complete a different form and then having to complete another different form, pretty much with the same information. Another issue uh that was raised uh was the fact that um administrative staff, so people with um completing this uh administrative tasks as the main function uh actually were really important in making sure that those uh whose main uh role was to box on something different could do so. And uh the problem that in recent years, years, we've done administrative um roles have been capped quite substantially. Meaning that uh we have, for example, nurses saying that they had to uh print out uh put in envelopes, some and go and post uh letters to uh patients sent out, which obviously is denied with the use of uh the qualified needs. Um so some of the recommendations obviously are dressed thoroughly, uh some of these tasks and there are some uh Dignex that uh show the thoughts of some uh what some participants told us. Um in terms of automation and AI, this was an area that we particularly wanted to um explore uh because there is so much interest across governments on uh the role that AI um could play in uh making the public sector uh more efficient. So we asked questions about use of AI and whether this is something that is already used at work, whether participants were at least uh familiar and had used the technology outside of work. So in terms of the um opinions about AI, um we're actually quite surprised that there was quite a positive attitude across participants who saw it as a potential useful tool um to make their roles uh more productive and potentially take away some of these uh administrative tasks. Especially with uh staff, administrative staff, as I said, was in uh a lot of demand, but quite uh limited. Um I think there was a view of the fact that um automation and AI is uh basically uh not a negative um, you know, technology. Uh but they need to be um implemented with uh a lot of awareness and a lot of uh considerations about ethics over uh data safety. And something that was mentioned was the lack of a clear uh framework and uh clear guidance on how to use these tasks at work. And quite often, uh when these uh, these uh technologies were used, uh it was mainly because there was some uh particularly uh key or particularly knowledgeable member of staff. But it wasn't a uh centralized enjoyment across departments. Um so certainly one of the recommendations that uh we got from this was to uh develop uh such guidelines and framework or make what is away, what is available uh more um easily um accessible from uh from, from the technical. Finally, a couple of conclusions. Uh first of all, uh what we have done as part of this uh work, uh so adapting a survey using qualitative research shows the value that uh methodologies which are not strictly economic can play in the development of the colonial policy. Uh so it's social media here, I feel I need to um wave a flag to be important that, that these methods can uh can play. Second, uh as Alice mentioned, uh we have a lot of data and a lot of evidence from the qualitative research, which uh is still untapped and that we want to uh analyze much more in uh the next uh few months. Uh we will be consulting with uh government departments about their priorities, but if you have ideas uh or um, you know, potential interest in uh additional analysis, get in touch and we would be very happy to uh discuss. And we also have plans to make the um quantitative data from the survey available on SRS in the summer. We want to consider how this uh evidence can uh be used to inform uh measurement improvements. So again, if you have ideas uh we'd be very happy to discuss with you. Um and in terms of next steps, uh we're also exploring running a second year of survey in the qualitative research. And currently, we have another survey in field uh at ONS, uh which is the public sector management practices survey, which is another station of the uh mess with management expectations survey that the ONS already run in the private sector to understand uh management practices, uh in this case in the public sector and uh how that impacts productivity. Um and we would be doing some qualitative research on that as well. So um keep an eye on this space, but it will be uh more data oriented. But uh for now, thank you very much.
Any questions? Gentlemen in the middle and then gentlemen at the back.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that, that was really interesting. Thank you. Um I've got a question, but I just wanted to also flag something that I'm working on. So I'm a analyst in the, in DC, central government. Uh and one of the things I look at in my team is the R and D workforce. And we've got a second wave of the survey going out in the next two weeks where we do ask a question on uh the different activities, the, the R and D workforce. This is quite a broad definition of the R and D workforce, the activities they take and how much time they, that they spend in it. So we should link up on, on that. Um but I was just really wondering if you had any further breakdowns of, of, of the um differences between types of, of people that you uh investigated. So I think you said this was delivery, like sort of frontline jobs? I don't know if, if that was right. So I've been really interested personally on this sort of central government and what some of the biggest barriers there were to productivity, like anecdotally, you get, you know, meetings, reporting, people complain at these things, but also between um different, different career stages, whether you notice But also between different, different career stages, whether you notice any differences between people at different career stages or in different types of role, I'm sure that there's a lot more, you know, behind the, behind the headlines.
Yeah, I think probably more for the survey because obviously the qualitative research is a small sample to break down by different characteristics.
So for the time you survey, we've made some breakdowns, particularly by sector, available. And we are totally being driven by the sample size. So in some cases, to enable breakdowns to happen, we've had to aggregate activities together. And so we're interested in specific cuts of the data that people require and then we can see, see what's feasible. But yeah, we've collected those demographics, we've collected information on the occupations and on the roles so that we can do exactly what you're suggesting. Education is one of the areas that we, we're just starting our deep diving to, so in a few weeks, how am I should be able to answer that?
Paul at the back.
Brilliant, thank you. Yeah, so just on the, the break, the survey, the breakdown of the work today, is there an avenue for validation and comparison with workers in similar roles in the private sector? So asking questions like, does a private school teacher perform, perform the same or different primary and secondary tasks? And if they are more efficient or more productive, can local authority schools learn something from the breakdown in primary, secondary tasks?
So to an extent, we are able to do some private and public sector comparisons. And that's because we made use of our general time use survey and added some higher level questions onto that survey, particularly around perceptions of productivity and identifying the types of tasks that individuals complete. And we, we used a few free text questions where we said, if you do admin, what is an admin task to you? How important do you think it is? And those sorts of questions. But the detailed activity breakdown that we showed on the screen today, that was just for the public sector. And so our pilot survey was just targeted to them. So we don't have a, a parallel one for the private sector.
I can add on that though, that the management practices survey that is currently, currently in field will have a level of comparability with the management expectations survey. And although that is more focused on understanding management practices, talking to managers and people at higher level of seniority, there will also be some questions as part of that on administrative tasks, for example. So it won't go into as much detail as the diary here, but it can still collect some views. And in that case, there would be some level of comparability with the management expectations survey. And I think there is a presentation on management expectations survey tomorrow morning. So you might have an opportunity to ask our team in that session.
Question just down the other front.
Yeah, thank you. Very, very interesting. I was wondering if in the qualitative data analysis, if anything came up around accountability, because there's something, from a lot of research, I get that a lot of admin tasks, as you said, like are done like repeatedly by many people because they are under so much scrutiny that they just want to be like double safe. I print it out, I save it online, digital, et cetera. And is this something that came up in the focus group or rather not?
So it didn't come up exactly defined as an activity, but there was certainly a feeling that many tasks were redundant and quite often, you know, the task itself was important, but for various reasons of bureaucracy or IT systems that don't talk to each other, there was a requirement to complete it many, many times, which obviously is what gave great frustration to the respondents. So there was definitely that level of, I need to fill out something. And another colleague of mine works pretty much the way as to fill out that same thing. And there's no reason, if not that this is what we have to do.
Yeah, that would also be interesting to talk to the people, maybe a few levels above.
So this is what we're going to do when we do the qualitative about the public sector management practices survey. So this is what we, we plan to do. But I think some of what you mentioned in relation of the resilience tool is definitely really interesting. And trust, trust is not something that I thought to include in that part of the research and I would want to talk a bit more. It might be useful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Very last question over here. Thanks. That was very interesting. I think this is probably a question for Ellis. I couldn't see the detailed questions that you had down the right hand side of that slide. It was simply too small. I mean, that's just a factor of life. But I wondered whether you picked up during your time the time allocations, anything about the quality of the job that was being done and the tasks that were being expected of people. One of the focus group results was very interesting because a teacher was saying, I now have to spend a lot of time on the mental health of my kids. Whereas I'm absolutely sure when I was at school, that was not the case, that teachers never gave that a thought. That was not something that was on the agenda. They just taught. And, and I'm wondering whether you, you can pick up that kind of sense of, of what it is that people are doing, not just in terms of admin and whether that's important, but is the scope of what a teacher is supposed to do changing over time?
Yeah, so we do have some free text questions in the like follow up questionnaire. Once they've completed the diary tool, we ask for a little bit more information. And I think we've already started to see some areas coming through, not so much the change over time, more just as a snapshot of what was importing up on that day, what do they do now? We haven't asked, we haven't posed any questions about how it's evolved, but I wonder if that, I mean, it has been coming up in the focus groups.
It has come up in the focus groups to some extent about the roles becoming wider and wider and wider. And especially, I think it was mostly in education and to some extent in the health sector, where there was a lot of complaints, especially after COVID. There was so much that was needed in terms of the data and agents and checking on, I don't know, the key health and mental health and, you know, kind of like a broad range of tasks that perhaps are not exactly what people went to education think of their job as a teacher. And there was, there were also some reflections about the impact that these had on the workplace balance, but also on retention. So it was mentioned, I think, in the health sector. Some respondents said that some roles are deeply well known for having it all that meaningful, having a very broad scope. And people just don't want to apply for those jobs, especially today, and if there's very low visibility, no matter what.
And we are hoping to run a second wave of the public sector time use survey, drawing on the insights that Sonya has found in the quali research. So perhaps change over time is something that we can bring into the future wave.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Adam Clark, who's going to take us through a number of the changes that we've been implementing in around the area of education.
Right. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Richard, for the introduction. So a key of the public service productivity review is to identify improved methods and data sources that will inform the public sector service areas that compose our statistics. And I'm going to focus on some of the changes that we've made for education. Now, in 2021, education was actually the third largest public sector service area on the basis of expenditure shares. But it's actually the second largest, only behind healthcare with discernible direct output measures. So it has a very heavy influence on overall productivity at the UK level. Now, before the PSP review, our model for education was already well developed with several dimensions of data, quality adjusted models, direct measurements on the output, as well as on the input side where we directly measure labour. But in collaboration with the Department for Education, the reviewers identified several areas, particularly within the output space, that could benefit from improvements. So productivity in a nutshell is the volume of outputs divided by the volume of total inputs that go into the provision of those services. And there's two elements to the output. There's the quantity side, which represents the volume of activities delivered by that service area. And then there's the quality side, which represents the outcomes as a result of those activities that have been delivered. So a key principle that's applied across all of PSP is that we obtain the number of activities performed by that service area. And then these are weighted by the expenditure that goes into the provision of those services. So we generate a cost weighted activity index. In the case of education, the activity metric are the enrollment figures across a range of institutions from preschool all the way down to the further education space. For primary and secondary schools, we also have to make an adjustment according to the absence rate. And it's also worth mentioning that in 2020 onwards, we had to make additional adjustments for remote learning, attendance during in-person teaching following the emergence of COVID. So we obtained these data from the national accounts at the Office for National Statistics. And as for the quality adjusted side, the main component that informs the quality adjusted model for education is attainment or exam performance. There are other components that inform the quality adjusted model for schools also. So for example, bullying and the disadvantaged gap index, although these do have a relatively small weight. The teacher training component was also historically quality adjusted according to the pass rate of those achieving qualified teacher status. And I do just want to emphasise at this stage is that while the quantity output measures do inform the UK national accounts, the quality adjusted output at the moment at least does not feed into the national accounts. So in terms of attainment, we don't just take the growth rates of GCSEs, for example, and use that to inform our index because that would imply that that exam mark that's been achieved for that year is solely attributable to year eleven. Obviously, this is not true. The teaching that we experience, even as far back as reception, ultimately has some influence on the exam mark that we ultimately achieve. So we apply a cohort split model where we apply retrospective weighted contributions within a cohort towards that exam mark that they achieved for that year. And if we want to gather an attainment mark for one year, we need to take the weighted contributions of each year across cohorts. So for example, let's say it's 2015, we take the year eleven contribution from cohort one in 2015. We then take the year ten contribution from a second cohort who are in 2015 and so on and so forth. And by doing this, we account for the cumulative nature of education. Now, as we're all very well aware, education was a service area that was hit particularly hard by COVID. Exams were cancelled and grades that were, that did come out were basically teacher assessed and were ultimately inflated, not typical with what we would have normally seen. So that did introduce a major problem for our measures because we didn't have that comparable consistent data. So at the time, a proxy measurement was identified in the form of learning loss. So in this study here, that was commissioned by the DFE and the Education Policy Institute, they calculated the average months of learning lost in maths and English for primary and secondary schools. And ultimately, we use these data to effectively illustrate the trends and learning outcomes during the height of the pandemic. Now, this figure here shows the education productivity indices in our publication for the 2020 calendar year. I'd like to direct your attention towards that purple line, where as you can observe, we do see a very notable drop in output in 2020. This is what the learning loss drove. So everything prior to 2020, we use our typical attainment measures that are adjusted according to the cohort split model as I've just described. But when we get to 2020, we use the learning loss measure and know how cohort adjustments were applied at this stage. So following the PSP review, we've used this as an opportunity to go back and revisit this space and determine if there are any potentially stronger statistics that could be used to influence the, the index at this stage. But before I do that, I'm just going to talk through some of the other changes that have been made on the quantity output side within the national accounts. So we get the enrollment figures for schools. Historically, these were aggregate figures for local authority schools and academies. These are now split into local authorities and academy schools, each with their own corresponding weights. So we have that added layer of granularity within the data. The approach to calculate FTEs in pre-primary schools has also been updated. Cost weights were equalised between local authority, pre-primary and private voluntary and independent schools because they were indicated to be equal. So they've effectively been combined as one unit. Healthcare and teacher training have effectively been removed. So I mentioned earlier how we get this data from the public sector outputs division of the national accounts. The measurements for these institutes are already being captured within the non-profit institute serving households component of the national accounts. So there was an element of double counting there. And teacher training and healthcare training is now usually provided by higher education institutes, universities basically, as opposed to publicly funded education. A few other changes also include updating expenditure costs and using better systems, exploring whether there were disaggregated measures for further education. So at the moment, we use an aggregate measure for further education, so the sixteen to nineteen adult learners and aggregate measure for enrollment as well as expenditure. We did want to see if we could explore disaggregating this. So for example, looking at colleges, six forms and apprenticeships. But as a result of funding mechanisms, it would have been difficult to allocate accurate expenditure in this, in this approach. So we've ended up sticking with the aggregate figure. These have all been applied to our recently published estimates that were published at the end of March. But for the rest of the presentation, I'm just going to talk you through the approach where we went back and revised the learning loss procedures. And I'm going to go over this in the next few slides. We are planning other changes as well, such as adding entertainment measures for further education, replacing our bullying measure with wellbeing, but this will come at a later stage in the review. So learning loss was identified to be an appropriate proxy indicator for student performance at the time. But upon further investigation, there are some issues that need to be acknowledged. Learning loss is effectively a measure of how far ahead or behind one cohort of students is in comparison to another. So it's not really an indicator of academic performance. So that's not consistent with what we typically use. There are questions as to whether it's an appropriate metric for our cohort model. Effectively, learning loss, we're looking at the difference between cohorts during COVID. When you, when you try to retrospectively apply that back to reception, conceptually and logically, the water started to become a little bit murky here as to whether this is a justified approach. Learning loss is also potentially double counting our quantity output measures. So I mentioned earlier how from 2020 onwards, we needed to apply additional adjustments on the output side according to remote learning, increased absence rates, et cetera. That's what learning loss is already effectively measuring. There is learning loss as a result of remote learning, as a result of the increased absences, et cetera, et cetera. And we're already accounting for that on the quantity output side. So there was a concern of double counting. The study that we used to get the learning loss data didn't actually have data for the following academic year. If learning loss had a robust basis for being included, then there might be a rationale for exploring different methodologies. But on the basis of what's been raised in the other boxes, this does raise questions as to learning losses inclusion in the first place. So after a few discussions with DFE as well as with OFqual, the National Reference Test was identified as something else that we could potentially use. The National Reference Test, or the NRT, was commissioned by OFqual in 2017 and its purpose was to monitor GCSE level performance over time without the accountability pressures that come with GCSEs. So the NRT is basically a short test in English and maths. It's taken by year eleven students who are due to take their, their GCSEs that year. So it's taken around about the February, March time. And what they did, so the first test was taken in 2017 and this provides a baseline for which performance can be compared. So effectively, the outcomes of the 2017 NRT were mapped to twenty seven GCSE performance in order to determine how performance within the NRT correlates with specific grade boundaries within GCSEs. The NRT can also serve as evidence in the awarding of GCSEs because it is almost effectively a mock GCSE examination in itself. Approximately three hundred schools participate and students are randomly selected to take the test. Very importantly, the NRT was not affected by the grade inflation issues that plagued GCSEs during COVID. So this did make it quite an attractive option for us to consider. Now, obviously, there are a few cons involved, but just to start with some of the pros. So I think the main one is that the NRT is a more direct indicator of GCSE level performance. It has that link to academic performance that the learning loss, for example, just didn't have. It's a more appropriate metric for the cohort split model. Ultimately, this is almost like a GCSE exam. So training in reception, year one, two, et cetera, would have had some bearing on the mark that was achieved. And the data is available in a time series from 2017, something that the learning loss didn't necessarily have. So in terms of some cons, so there's over three thousand four hundred secondary schools. So in terms of some cons, so there's over 3,400 secondary schools in England, so 300 schools, that sample size is considerably lower than what you'd expect to see from an attainment series. The NRT only looks at performance in English and maths. It doesn't cover a whole variety of subjects, so it is a bit limited in that aspect. And even though the NRT is the closest thing to a GCSE, at the end of the day, it's not a formally recognised GCSE. So there is a slight element of inconsistency with what we would typically use. So that blue line that you see there, that is the quality adjusted output index that we generate when we include the learning loss. And that red line shows what happens when we include the National Reference Test. Now, I think the most key observation is that that drop in 2020 is not as significant when we were using the learning loss. And the reason for this is because the growth rates in the NRT were nowhere near as volatile or as notable as what we observed within the learning loss measure. There are some back series revisions as well. These are not as a result of the NRT, just to clarify. So I talked earlier about how we removed teacher training and teacher training was quality adjusted. That element has been removed. And by the time we include the output series with academies, updated unit costs, et cetera, and when we quality adjust those updated quantity data, that does drive some of the back series revisions that we see. So just to summarise all of that, so education has benefited from a few changes identified through the PSP review, in particular, the quality adjusted output aspect where the learning loss measure has now been replaced with the National Reference Test to indicate student performance during the height of the pandemic. As a result, that fall in education quality adjusted output is not as significant as previous estimations. And we are making, we are planning more improvements in this space before the end of the review period, March 2025, where we particularly want to include an attainment measure for further education and to explore a pace in bullying with an aspect of student wellbeing. I do invite the audience to refer to our publications if you want to find out more information. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Any questions? No. You win. First one, first one. Good. Well, I will ask you one. You mentioned there the FE attainment and the measurement. Can you just say a little bit more about what's driving our need to put FE into the education numbers?
Yeah, so we do include FE on the quantity output side within our estimates. And in order to provide that global overview of what's happening within education, because we quality adjust primary and secondary schools, ideally, we want to quality adjust the further education aspect as well. So we've got that globe because education is already quite a well-developed area within PSP. But by including that further education attainment measure, this is going to give us the best global overview of what's happening on the outputs and productivity side within the overall education space.
And did you want to just say a little bit about why we're not covering HE in this area?
Yep, so HE is not publicly funded. This HE is effectively university degree level and it's not, it doesn't quite belong to the same infrastructure as schools and further education would, for example. So there would be some questions raised if we were going to incorporate this into our education measures as it's not, it's not got that direct link with public sectors as primary, secondary and sixth form and colleges do, for example.
Question over here. Thanks, Adam. You may have gathered that I come from the higher education sector. And very, very interesting, but it does seem to me that you're definitely missing a trick on the basis of that last answer because clearly home students who go to university have benefited enormously from the earlier education that has been publicly funded. And just as your GCSE measure goes back through the cohorts, back to reception, there ought to be some measure in your output of the public sector that accounts for the fact that home students go on to university, some of them, and benefit from the knowledge that they've got through that schooling in their period. And that's very important because you could then start to think about what value do the universities actually add themselves into the inputs that they get. And I know, I mean, I'm not an expert in this area, but I know there are measures whereby universities try to measure something on the basis of the quality of the students that they get when they arrive and how much value they add to them. And that's also been part of the debate in the school sector, as I'm aware, between deprived communities and non-deprived communities. And I just think there's a bit of extra work to be done because what you're effectively just saying is the education sector contributes nothing to the higher education output. And that's clearly wrong.
Any thoughts on that one?
Yeah, it's interesting. It's not something that we've given loads of thought to, but it's definitely something to think about moving forward.
Is HE in effectively the knock-for-profit, the MPI sector? It sort of naturally falls outside our bailey work and effectively we're compelled to use the tuition fee as a form of price and the price mechanism therefore wins. If you've got a price, you don't need to do all this stuff where you don't have a price. That's our fundamental problem. But I think it's a really important example of the way that many of the delivery chains we see and the prices we see internalise the benefits they receive from elsewhere, whether it's the benefit that HE gets from the education sector or the benefit that I get in my house price from the local park. These crossovers within market prices are a tricky area more generally, but thank you. I think, oh, can you speak, we've now generated lots of questions. So we're going to take one at the back.
Yes. I was thinking, I'm fascinated by the presentation, but I'm not familiar with the National Reference Test. So can you say if it's English, it's GB? And if it's not in Northern Ireland, is there an improvement in Northern Ireland, if you know what?
Yes, very, very good question. So yeah, the NRT applies only to England. There is not an equivalent in Northern Ireland, as far as I'm aware, nor with any of the other devolved administrations for that matter. So as the review moves forward, we do want to have a bit more of a focus on the DA's and what data sources could be used to like inform those areas. Because at the moment, we've taken the NRT into our measures because we've got quite a nice breakdown of the DA's within our education model because we quality adjust primary, secondary schools within England. We do the same for Scotland, Northern Ireland and Wales. Now, for the moment, the NRT is just informing the secondary school measure across all four nations. So this is something that we usually do within PSP. If there's not, if there's not an obvious indicator for the devolved administrations, then we would just rely on an England measure. But as part of the review, we have got this big section open now where we are exploring the DA aspect a lot more closely. And as we go along with that, then hopefully we might find something that could inform the Northern Ireland measure, for example. Or if not, we'd have to take a decision as to whether we keep the NRT for Northern Ireland or not.
And I think that is a really important issue in the review. I mean, one can easily imagine a world where Scotland performs slightly worse than England, then we apply a negative quality adjustment to both, which draws from the England side. Then you have English politicians talking about negative Scottish performance, Scottish politicians telling us how it's driven by an English negative performance. All looks dramatically hideous is the sort of thing we really should be avoiding. So I, we are very, very intent on finding good measures for each of the devolved administrations because that sort of cross comparison breaks down if you're comparing the same data with itself. That is nonsensical. I'm going to take a very last question here, the gentleman in white, and then Martin and I are going to start a conversation. I know Martin's got a question which he might leave out on, so go on.
I just had a question on apprenticeships because I'm not quite sure how the levy works, but I'm pretty sure there's some form of public funding within the apprenticeship levy. So whether you've had a look at those at all, especially considering the fact I'm an apprentice within the public sector, do you look at the benefit of the work outside of the education side of the apprenticeship could add to the wider public sector?
Yeah, so the apprenticeships component would be captured within our aggregate measure for further education. And ideally, yes, we would have wanted to get this on a more granular level. But the problem is, within the FE space, students can take more than two qualifications. So trying to allocate expenditure per qualification, per student, it does, it does become quite tricky to like get accurate expenditure figures for that. This is, we did explore this with the DFE and this was the message that like, that did become clear to us. So we could have potentially gotten a measure for apprenticeships and alongside colleges, six forms, et cetera. But then there would have been questions on whether the expenditure data was accurate. And then obviously, that's going to have implications on the index that's generated. So moving forward, there might be some more space to maybe dig into these funding mechanisms a little bit more, just to see if we can get that on a more broken down level. But at the moment, the message I've received is that the aggregate measure is going to be the more accurate measure to use for the time being, of which apprenticeships are being captured.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
So now I'm going to introduce Martin Wiel to the stage. Martin has been a long-time researcher in this area. And obviously, there's a lot in what we've just seen to reflect on. I wonder if you have any immediate thoughts?
Well, thank you very much. My immediate thought on the question of higher education is that there are actually two aspects to quality adjustment. One is in public sector output, the other is in private sector output. Now, of course, we have a small private sector of primary and secondary education. Tertiary education is entirely private sector because it's a charitable sector. But in terms of looking at public sector productivity, obviously, you focus on the public sector component. If you want to do quality adjustments over the whole spread of the national accounts, then you also need to look at quality adjustments in, for example, the universities. You need to look at quality adjustments in the case of other services. And the problems with those aren't necessarily terribly different from those of the public sector. It's just that there hasn't been the same pressure to review them, at least. That's my sense. I don't know what you'd think of that, Richard.
I suppose my thinking is turning to the question of whether the tuition fee as a regulated price is adequately serving as an approximation of a market price. Because if it is, one would assume that one shouldn't need to quality adjust because your price should adjust to the quality of the service being delivered. But where it is a regulated price, which isn't necessarily reflecting market fundamentals, is that where you're seeing the gap opening up?
Well, I think you could argue that, no, at least for some universities, the market price is the price charged to overseas students. That's, no, there is a clear market for that. Obviously, you can't say that overseas students cost a lot more to educate than UK students, at least I don't believe that's the case. So, no, you can't have two different prices and say that they're both market prices. To my mind, it's the overseas student price that's the market price and we effect have a cross subsidy to home students. But I think separately from that, I'm not sure that you would say the price of the service necessarily reflected the quality. If I buy a television set, I remember the first television set my parents bought in the early 1960s costs, I think, £45 or something like that. Inflation adjusted, that would now be in the thousands. And if you spent £2,000 on a television set, you would get quite a lot more than a 19-inch black and white that received two channels when it had been on for long enough actually to warm up to work.
Is, setting aside the television example, is the cross subsidy within the non-resident price for higher education important there? I'm thinking it probably isn't because it reflects the willingness to pay and therefore is the value that the consumer is extracting from the service.
Well, is it the willingness to pay? No, for all we know, the home students would be prepared to pay higher prices. The evidence was certainly when tuition fees were introduced, and I mean, this is a fairly general point, you find more schoolchildren go on to university in countries that charge for university education than those in which it's free. That suggests to me at least that the willingness to pay is at least as high as the price actually charged and may possibly be higher, certainly for some courses, if not all courses. So I don't think you can easily turn the home student fee into a proxy for a market price.
Okay, I see we've got a hand from Sonia, so I'm going to pass the microphone. Oh, thank you, Roz, because I think Sonia has a question on this.
Thanks. Yes, actually a question on this point because the tuition fees were introduced, but the outputs, what is delivered, did not change overnight. So the willingness to pay has changed simply because there isn't an alternative. If you want to go to university in the UK, then that is the price that you have to pay. So is it really willingness to pay or is it the result of the completely regulated market where there is no competition? And how does the price measure to what is delivered if the price has tripled or I can't remember exactly what the change has been, but what is delivered has remained pretty much the same?
Well, to my, I mean, this may be contradicting what I just said. To my mind, the price is a regulated price and it, no, no, people are prepared to pay it, but it no more reflects the upper limit of their willingness to pay than does the zero price I pay when I use the National Health Service.
So I'm going to move us forward a little bit. So obviously, you were closely involved in the original Atkinson review and you've been interested in monitoring the work we've done since that point. So I was wondering if you could reflect on the key improvements you think you've seen or things that you think we should be focusing on in the review, key gaps or features which have changed, particularly anything which you think has changed, which might affect the principles or decisions that the Atkinson review gave us and which we've built on.
Well, I think, I mean, the Atkinson review did provide a very solid foundation. At much the same time or slightly ahead of the Atkinson review, Joe Greis commissioned some work at the National Institute and the University of York on measuring the output of the health sector. And as a consequence, sort of in step with the Atkinson review, we were thinking about what sort of quality adjustments might be available for measuring the output of the health service. And actually, at that time, 20 years ago, there was a paucity of data. So you knew that people had had hospital procedures. If they survived more than 30 days, all you knew was that they had survived. So you could use the survival rate up to 30 days as your measure of quality. And beyond that, you knew rather little about what was being done to people. There since then have been data collection exercises, at least for, you know, common treatments like, I think, cataract operations, the most common procedure, hip replacements, knee replacements and so on. And those may tell us about the health benefits that people derive from those operations, but they don't tell us how things change over time. And, you know, at least until the early part of the last decade, mortality rates were falling rather fairly rapidly. That certainly wasn't shown as an output of the health service. It probably was, at least to some extent, an output of the health service, but it's not clear how much. But that suggests that at least, you know, up to about 2010, 2012, there were quality improvements in the output of the health service that weren't being picked up in the quantity measures that the ONS was publishing. And I suspect up to that point, no, that was still largely the case. Since then, the mortality improvements have been much slower, even if you look, if you look up to the period just before Covid, Covid is of course a separate risk. And even there, there are questions of, you know, how the effects of it were recorded in the national accounts. You know, one particular issue that has interested me is preventative treatment, preventative medicine, or if you like, other things that or if you like, other things that people do to protect themselves. For example, protective services provided by the public, policing, defence and so on. And should we, are we allowing fully for the breadth of protection that they provide? I suspect the answer is not. People have more to be protected than used to be the case. And that isn't reflected in the quality measures of the national accounts. The National Health Service has led steady improvements. The COVID vaccination had rather large health benefits in terms of conferring extra years of life on people who would otherwise have died from COVID. And that benefit isn't shown in the output of the health sector during the period of the epidemic. So there are quite a wide range of issues where I think the, if you like, the aims of the Atkinson report, I suspect are yet to be realised. How far it will be possible to make progress with these in the work that the ONS is doing now, I'm not sure. But at least I hope some progress will be made.
Any questions from the floor at this? Ah, one in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I haven't read everything you've released on this and I think I'm going to look into it more after this. But I wanted to have you done anything on looking at the productivity of the kind of knowledge worker in the civil service. So I think many people here are probably analysts in analyst jobs in the government department. And I often think it is quite hard to measure productivity and articulate it in our jobs. So whether it's that you've impacted a decision with your analysis or you've produced a report and that's got a certain number of users. I'm just wondering if you've got any, anything already or in the pipeline on the kind of, let's say, a kind of central department, kind of policy analyst type role and how to measure the productivity. And thinking about AI as well, I've got an interest in, I sit on a cross government group on the impact of AI on analysis. And in terms of research, I can see it's not clear cut yet whether, how much of a productivity increase we get from that. So just wondered if you've got any thoughts on this. So I can see it's kind of, the examples given today are more on the delivery services.
Shall I start on this one?
Please.
Yes. So within the funding that we have for the review, we have a small amount of funding to support what's called the governed survey. So governed is the Government Survey of R&amp;D Expenditures. And we want to augment that to begin to think about, of course, measuring public service productivity is nice. Understanding what the drivers of public service productivity are is how you get impact onto the big policy questions. And that's one of the reasons we've undertaken the Management Practices Survey, the Time Use Survey, but also investment into governed because obviously government R&amp;D either is effectively given away to the market, to other players, to support their development or can be used to support public service productivity improvements. And so we do want to understand a bit more about those questions and to make sure that we have a good picture of that. I think one of the areas in here which is really important is how we think about, yes, the economics of information, the economics of analysis, how our type of work feeds through those innovation R&amp;D channels to support better policymaking. Measuring central government departments is relatively more difficult in this space because you have fewer measures of output. You know, is it the number of white papers being issued? Is the number of bills being passed into Parliament? There are some metrics, but they're relatively harder to grapple with. And I think, you know, obviously, we were very, you know, we want to make sure that we're marking ourselves fairly against everybody else. So one of the questions we've been asking ourselves over the last few years is, what does productivity look like at the Office for National Statistics? And there you can, you can create metrics of number of publications, number of downloads, all of these sorts of things. But of course, thinking about the quality, you know, if you make an article half as long, is that half an article or is it still one article? If there's a minor error, if there's a major error, how do they play in? Using, you know, recognizing they're quite rough cut numbers, we did see quite a significant uptick in productivity during COVID, which has ebbed back a little bit. And I think that, you know, challenging ourselves to interrogate what's happening underneath those metrics is important. I'm not sure, Martin, whether there's anything there you wanted to come in on?
Well, I think all I could say is that similar problems, of course, arise in measuring productivity in the universities. If I give a lecture to 250 students, is that me being more productive than giving a lecture to 80 students? Or is it simply a class that I can't look after properly because there are so many of them? If I look at the way that teaching has changed since I started university teaching in the 1980s, though, I mean, partly, you know, Cambridge and Oxford, I was working in Cambridge. Cambridge, you know, has probably devotes more resources to looking after students than other universities, than most other universities did then. But the whole thing looks quite different now. The students seem grateful for a brief conversation, whereas in the past, they, you know, it would have been possible to make much more time available for them. So as I say, in some ways, that's an increase in output. But I suppose it's a bit hard for me to avoid thinking that there's been a decline in quality.
I think we've got time for one more question, if anyone would like to come in from the floor. Lady at the back.
Thank you very much. I would just like to ask if you have an opinion about this as a government now moving into increasing their productivity and getting more value for the money when it came to the healthcare providers. So as you have mentioned, it is hard to capture for the quality of care, even if we will take about the survival rate after a surgery or so on. So now the notion of value-based care, where they will look for other quality-related indicators, for example, the readmission rates, not just the overall survival. Do you think that the government really can do much better with that kind of approach in terms of increasing their productivity and forgetting a better value for their money?
Well, I mean, if I could say on this, I'm hardly an expert on the health service and I'm not pretending to be. So I certainly wouldn't want to identify, you know, areas where I thought it would be easy for the government to get better value for their money. But I suppose what I would say is that the sense of dissatisfaction I hear about the health service in Britain is much stronger than I hear about the dissatisfaction with the health service in Germany. And I think that does raise quite a lot of questions. The spend in Germany is a bit more than in Britain, but not really very much more per capita.
And I might come in on that one. I think it provokes a question because for me, that sort of anecdotal information, do we see it feeding through into our quality assessment? So our quality adjustment brings together changes in quality of life. It brings together patient satisfaction scores. It brings together patient waiting times to get treatment. But of course, for these things to have policy traction, you need to see them change when those assessments by the public are shifting. And I think that that's important for us to see that actually the data are being reactive to real movements. And of course, with COVID, I think we've seen that. But as Adam's demonstrated, it can often be very difficult in real time for us to get the magnitude of some of those movements right first time. And I think there's more we need to look at, to think about, not just how we deliver a review that says in 2024 we have good metrics, but how we keep refreshing those through time and are able to keep them live and relevant to the services being delivered. I'm not sure, Martin, whether you'd like to make any final words, but...
Well, I'd like to correct what I just said. In Germany, it's not the expenditure per capita which is much the same, but the proportion of GDP spent though on health treatment, which is much the same or only slightly higher. Of course, Germany is more prosperous, but that presumably also has implications that some of the labour-intensive services that health services buy in are more expensive. So how a volume comparison would look like, I really don't know.
And with that, I'm going to thank all of our speakers this afternoon. I know it's been a long two-hour session and people are probably desperate to get out for a cup of tea and coffee. But a final big hand for all of our speakers, please.